Regular meeting in the rural city council for Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty at four thirty P M. The order, first item on the agenda is consent agenda items, what she wishes on them?
I'll have a motion to approve those.
Second?
We have a motion and a second approved consent agenda items, any discussion on any? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no, motion carries. At this time, we're gonna jump ahead a little bit on the agenda and we're gonna go to, uh, item three point three, conditional use permit for Mike Crawl. Go ahead, John.
Good evening. This is a conditional use permit by Mike Crawl on behalf of M and D Properties LLC requesting a conditional use permit to allow the location of two apartment, uh, resi- two residential dwelling units on the second floor of a building located uh, in the downtown B two service business zoning district and legally described as, um, the southwesterly A ha- half of lot fourteen and lot thirteen of block sixty seven south of Center Street. Following a public hearing, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request with four conditions uh, on its March twenty sixth, uh, twenty twenty meeting. And those conditions are as follows, uh, the property owner pay the cost of recording the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. The applicant, uh, slash pop property owner will provide signage identifying the location of the three required parking stalls uh, to be used by residents occupying the two apartment dwellings on the property. The applicant, uh, property owner, um, will maintain this signage for a period of, for the period in which the apartments uh, are located on the property. And lastly, any increase in the number of apartments, um, would require a new conditional use permit. In addition to the four permits, uh, the planning commission, uh, also, uh, requested that staff speak with the applicant um, and ask for his consideration of a few other items, and they are as follows. One would be to, uh, limit the parking for the new apartments to three stalls rather than four, um, about in the alley. Another one is to provide landscape, uh, landscape space, um, in the eliminated parking stall and adjoining areas. And then provide one or more parking required residential apart- sorry, let me start over on that. Uh, to provide one or more required residential apartment stalls on the adjoining property, um, owned by Mr. Crawl's partner Dale Bushard. Now, at that meeting, um, there was a neighboring property owner, uh, Mr. Covington, who owns a property across the alley, uh, to the east of Mr. Crawl's property, who did address the planning commission. Um, and Mr. Covington is here tonight, um, and I'd asked that he did address the city council as well. Staff did speak with Mr. Crawl on those, uh, requests from the planning commission, and he responded with the following. The first item with lessening the stalls, Mr. Crawl, uh, said that he does need four stalls to accommodate, uh, the two apartments at this location, and he would not be in favor of reducing, uh, the stalls from four to three. As far as addressing safety concerns in the alley, Mr. Crawl said he would be willing to do angled parking, um, for those four parking stalls, and they would be angled towards First South. Also, he noted there will be some landscape space, um, in the parts that won't be covered by the parking areas, um, and he will also be using that, that small space for piling snow in the wintertime. And then, uh, lastly, Mr. Crawl noted that he doesn't own the property, um, adjoining his, uh, that's owned by Mr. Bushard at five nineteen First South, and, uh, therefore he couldn't locate parking stalls on that property. So in addition to that, staff did review, uh, the uses at that, at that site, the adjoining property. And, um, with the current uses that are located on that site, which would be a business down below and then apartment up above, there would be a required, uh, requirement of twelve off-street parking stalls for that site. Currently, um, there aren't any lines in the parking area, so we had to use measurements and then typical parking stall dimensions, and there's only about eight to nine parking stalls, uh, that would be available on that site. And then, uh, in addition to what the planning commission had presented to them, uh, staff also provided, um, in your packets, an aerial photo of block sixty seven south, and then another aerial photo showing the, uh, property layout and where the current parking stall stalls are, uh, for the office and, uh, business uses up front down Broadway, and then the four proposed stalls in the back.
Thank you, John. This is a public hearing, so anybody wants, has anything to like to add, say it? Step up to the mic, name an address for the record. Try to keep it maybe three minutes or less, if possible.
Okay, I don't have a timer.
That's okay.
My name is John Covington, my wife and I own, uh, property one oh six South, uh, Minnesota Street. It's directly across the alley from the, uh, construction, new construction that's going on. Uh, I'm here to address a concern that I have with the approval of this conditional use permit. Uh, I feel that we are, um, creating an area that, uh, we're going to increase congestion of, uh, traffic, uh, in and out of the alley. We already have a, uh, a busy alley as is with the other businesses in the area, and there is, uh, a potential with a vacant lot across the alley to increase it even more. Uh, by, uh, allowing this to pass, we also set precedence in that we are, um, uh, allowing other people to, um, consider adding residents on that half of the block as well, understanding that a conditional use permit would have to be granted, uh, for that also. So, we are, uh, essentially, I don't wanna use the phrase opening a can of worms, but I think we are, you know, thinking that something else could occur here that we're just getting started. Now, the, the other concern I've got is across the alley, there is a vacant lot that someday will be developed, and access to that lot will be through the alley because the frontage of that property is on, uh, Minnesota Street, which only allows two hour parking. So, whatever is built there, whether it's retail space or, or residential space, uh, the occupants are going to have to use the alley to, to access that area. What I see as, as happening specifically in this area is where my property is, which I have a building that's right on the lot line of the alley, the property across the alley, the parking stalls will be, uh, in and out in that area. We're creating a bottleneck for that entire alley right there, that's gonna be the smallest area for, for people getting through there. It's, it's a, it's a two-way alley, people go both directions. There, my building being as close as it is to the alley, you have to be very careful when you're party- uh, when you're pulling out because there are people that come through there, uh, at a, at a, I feel sometimes at a rapid speed. We, there is a business there that, um, uh, a heating and air conditioning business, they have service trucks coming in and out of there. I think there's at least three service trucks various times during the day. Uh, there's in the chiropractic office, they have people coming in and out of there. There's an accounting office. There's, uh, across the alley, there's a, a financial planning office, uh, thriving, uh, and they, all of their employees, I believe, park in their, uh, alley there, and that lot is full. There's also residents above there. There's two residents on the end of the block, one of them goes in and out of there on a daily basis. Uh, the other one is on the corner, they can, uh, access their, uh, residents off of, uh, Third South. And my building, I mean, we, there's three stalls there, but I have one apartment above that, you know, somebody's parking there. So, I, I see this as a, a project that has, um, evolved, uh, at, at a very rapid pace. And I, I don't know that there's criteria to address the, the density, uh, part of this, uh, area. You know, how much do you wanna put in a small, in, in a certain amount of space? I mean, I'm not against apartments, uh, trying to bring people downtown, I'm not against that sort of thing, but come with apartments or, uh, most all the residents that are living there, being Americans, we all have automobiles. I mean, this is a two-bedroom apartment, more than likely, there's gonna be four people there, and we're gonna need four stalls. So there's four more cars coming in and out of there. Did we, did we do anything to think about the neighborhood when we, uh, uh, allowed this a particular, uh, structure to be built? Uh, how many people are in the neighborhood now, and what's the potential for more people? We, I think we need to step back and not just look at, uh, what the numbers say. Well, we've got so many square feet, then we need, need so many stalls, and, uh, you know, we can, uh, the, the written documentation, we've, we follow that, I mean, according to everything that's been laid out, what the rule says, they qualify, there's nothing wrong with what they're doing, except the fact that we're going to look at this now with a, uh, and be subjective as to whether or not we really need more apartments downtown because more apartments comes along, more parking spaces. Uh, so, I think we need to, in moving forward, when these things come up, we need to look at the big picture. Where is it located, how's it going to affect the whole entire neighborhood? Unfortunately, what's, what's happened is that, I mean, we've got a, I mean, there's a structure there ready to, to continue on, and this thing has sort of evolved real quickly where, I mean, the footings and the foundation, the slab is, it's already there. And now we're, in reality, this is the meeting that should have been said that, okay, now, yes, you can do what you wanna do, you can start building, but we've already got part of it there. So it, it's, I know it's gonna be difficult to deny this, and, you know, I, I, I really don't expect you to deny it because they've met all the criteria, and we've got what they've, they've already got part of the building there. So, I really wish this would just be a, a starting point to where we can look in the future when we have these conditional use permits in these areas, that we take a look at something in a, in a broader picture and, and, um, not let what happened, happened here, and move forward with that. So, I mean, I, 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 I'm sure it'll all work out with the traffic and things like that, but people are just gonna have to be careful. You know, you're not gonna be able to avoid people speeding through the alleys, you know, or, or recklessly pulling in and out. You're not gonna be able to avoid that, whether you put signs or speed bumps or whatever you put there. But, it's, it's something that, you know, I think we could have avoided, I thought about in a different way when we initially started this, so.
Thank you.
Is that three minutes, or did I fill it?
Little bit more than three, it was very thorough.
Name an address for the record, please. Go ahead.
Hi there, I'm Mike Crawl at, uh, M and D, um, just, uh, going for the conditional use permit. Um, I, you know, I, I hear is, he has some valid points or whatever, I think part of the reason is his building that was originally, originally there is a little too close to the alley, so it kinda creates a blind spot for him to pull out or whatever, you know, I, I can't help that, you know, that's on his property or whatever, you know? Like I said, we're trying to meet the criteria, you know, we're trying to do the angled parking stalls, so that's gonna eliminate any issues of, you know, hopefully people getting close to his building that's right on the property line. So, um, I feel like, uh, you know, we're, we're just trying to create more, uh, people living downtown to help out the downtown businesses, everybody knows that downtown businesses are struggling right now, and we're trying to, you know, make some, uh, apartments that are closer to downtown, that people can utilize downtown, and, um, like I said, we're trying to work with the neighbors, the, the setbacks, you know, are, are plenty far away for cars to, you know, safely pull out of there and park, and, uh, and, um, should be plenty of room for traffic. We're not, it's not like people, when they park in their stalls, their vehicle's gonna be hanging into the alley. So, um, I, you know, and I can't control, you know, people speeding, you know, I'm not a police officer, you know, I don't do, you know, there's not a whole lot you can do as a homeowner or a landowner to slow down traffic from other people, if there's other businesses that are, you know, speeding through there or whatever, it's not really pertaining to our project, I guess, that's kind of, you know, a whole nother ball of wax there, but I feel like, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here is just to make, um, more space, uh, usable space for people, affordable housing, you know, the apartments aren't, you know, they're gonna be, we're trying to get people that, you know, need a place to live that, you know, isn't real expensive, you know, so we're trying to utilize the footprint that we have to work with, you know, and just go on top of, you know, the existing, you know, commercial space that we wanna put in. So, by doing that, we save a little bit of money by going up, you know, keeps the cost of the living down for the people to live in these apartments, and, and I know we need it in town to have affordable housing. So that's kinda the whole goal about this, and, um, uh, we're trying to do everything with green spaces and places to plow snow, so it doesn't, um, you know, eliminate any kind of view, view, you know, or any, you know? So I, I think we can, you know, accomplish that or whatever safely, so.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question on the, the parking stalls, so how many bedrooms are in the apartments that you're putting in?
So they're, they're a two-bedroom apartment, so, um, you know, chances are maybe they won't all be full or whatever, but ideally, if it's two people that work, you know, you know, typically each person has a car or whatever. And like I said, I don't own the property, uh, join into it, so I can't, you know, say like, yeah, we can designate space for, for these apartments on someone else's property or whatever, I just can't do that. And there is some off-street parking, but it's a little ways away, and there is the two-hour parking and stuff like that, so, um, it's, it's none of the commercial, or none of the offices would be using those spaces. So, those are designated up front, um, so the traffic, it should be just once a day in, once a day out. You know, it shouldn't be a high traffic, it's not like clients are gonna be coming into this business, it should be just, uh, just the people that live upstairs, so.
Anybody else have any questions for?
I'd like to just add a little bit from the planning commission's meeting, when we met, uh, we met as a commission, and, you know, it's, uh, as a commission, the concerns were coming up with, it meets all the criteria according to way we drafted our new ordinance. You know, this is our second conditional use permit to offer something like this, you know, and maybe like, uh, Mr. Covington states, you know, you have to look at the bigger picture of the community and the surroundings, you know, also. You know, the one we did across the street met the criteria, but it has a full parking lot in the rear, you know, on that aspect here. And I would like to just add, you know, if he did build his two-story as an office building, he doesn't have to come for conditional use permit for the parking, he, he meets the criteria there, you know, on that aspect, you know, so.
So say that again?
So.
If it were a business of a-
If it was a business, he meets the, he meets the criteria without a conditional use permit.
That he has.
He has enough parking to house that currently, but because he's coming here for residential, he needs a conditional use permit, and he needs one and a half units per, per apartment for a total of three. And if you review the site plan here and what the staff has prepared, he's actually with the four, he's one stall heavy.
Right, right, and that's what we, that would also would be included in this exception.
Correct. You know, so, kind of the consensus from the commission was to have staff talk to Mr. Crawl and his, and his partner. You know, we were not aware of that he doesn't own the other property, that that's solely owned by his partner, but he owns this one with his partner on that aspect to see if more parking could be over there. We were not aware of at the meeting, you know, the minimum criteria for that, but, you know, at the big picture, you know, staff says that that one, eight or nine stalls, could, you know, could accommodate, but report, you know, because of the building would require twelve. You know, but we're not addressing that property, we're
Right.
addressing the other property, you know, the other one was an existing structure, so.
And if we made it offices up there and all business, then it, then, then we wouldn't need, we could put parking all back there, correct?
Right, that, that's a comment I wanna step in on, I understand Mr. Covington's concern with the safety, but if Mr. Crawl was in here strictly for that office building, that site plan would have came in, he would have used those four stalls in back, and he wouldn't be here. I understand the safety thing, but, because it's residential, but if he was just strictly doing office, the site plan they had located, it wouldn't even be here. I just wanted to make note of that.
I'm trying, I'm trying to work with them, you know, doing them at an angle, leaving, we could have actually probably fit five stalls back there if it, we, if we turn, if we don't get approved, it'll probably be commercial up above it, and then we'll just be all stalls in the back is basically kinda what, you know, but I'm trying to work with, trying to get some-
Might be more traffic issue.
Correct, if, if we don't get approval, we're still gonna probably go two stories regardless, it'll just be all offices up there, and then it'll probably be a lot more traffic back there, so. We're trying to just, you know, you know, kinda mix like some residential into it, they do it up in the cities in Mankato, and we're just, you know, I know people don't like change or whatever, but we're trying to create, people want new, nice, um, apartments downtown, you know, and, and, you know, more high-end people even, maybe lawyers or doctors and stuff like that, where they can walk downtown and get a bite to eat or whatever, and spend money downtown, and we're trying to accomplish that by building some nice quality apartments, so.
So really, as, as this conditional use permit, I was kinda confused, we don't really have a decision on the parking because he's got enough stalls, and he can do with that what he wants, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, if we would deny the conditional use for residential tonight, he can move forward with the two-story and use those as stalls in the alley.
I was thinking that we, that he was short stalls, but he's, he's gotten plenty of stalls to meet the conditional use permit, so.
You know, so, you know, the only thing moving forward for the future would be that, you know, we get a complete set of plans before, you know, it's this far along, you know? You know, we didn't even have the ordinance in place, you know, when we, all of a sudden, we were doing a five-foot setback versus a ten-foot setback on the property and then proceeding, you know, on it. So it meets the criteria, so it's pretty-
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Take a, just to interject real quickly, um, just so you're clear on this issue, this is a conditional use permit, and, you know, every property is unique, and the council can impose conditions if you think it's necessary or appropriate. So, that's certainly something, it's an option to you. The other thing I would really urge is, uh, if any member of the council moves forward with this, um, the, please review the resolution as written because staff had suggested some possible changes to that. I'm not sure, including this landscaping thing, I don't know if Mr. Crawl's addressed that or not, but whatever the, uh, you're going to be proposing for the resolution, we need to make sure that it's, if it's gonna be different than the written resolution, you'll need to say that, just so we have that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Uh, Councilor Mack, how strong did your, uh, commission talk about those three stalls versus four? Is that a pretty strong argument?
Well, they were discussing whether to try to have some green space and to have lesser parking in the rear, you know? He could, he's got room, you heard him, he said he possibly could get five, but he would like to have four. You know, I mean, after, since the meeting and reviewing the packet that we got on Friday afternoon, you know, I like the fact that staff and Mr. Crawl have talked about diagonal parking for ease, or, you know, I like that versus just straight on that aspect, uh, you know, you know, defined landscape, is it concrete or it's a gravel, you know? Those are details, but, uh, on that aspect. But, you know, again, this is a case-by-case situation, you know, and it does meet the criteria if it's an office space. But, you know, moving forward, I would, you know, I've been in favor of move it, pushing it along tonight, but I think, you know, if this is gonna come for the future for more infill within our downtown community, that we have to take a look at the surrounding a little bit more before we proceed with things like this. I think we have to go a little more cautious on it for infill. Because, you know, looking at the neighboring property, which we're not talking about, that doesn't quite meet, you know, and and if this one meets and things of that nature.
Well, we have to balance that with what we were talking about previously, is people wanna live downtown.
That's what we've been-
They wanna walk to, get a bite to eat and walk home, and, and, and there's a, so it's a balance, it's a balance.
It's a balance, you know, and we, we did that, uh, with the Thrifty Building, you know, when we granted two apartments there, and they didn't have parking, but they found lease parking that they could, you know, we could work with it, in that aspect.
So this resolution does not include anything on a green space?
It was written, no, I'm not seeing it.
I didn't see it either for green space, even though I'm not that concerned in the alley, a business alley of having green space, but that's my personal opinion.
I'm not concerned with the, done, the alley either. Concerned, you know, uh, maybe for future, for remodels, say, in a B two service district, you know, to, to, uh, have some green space on the front half of the property, uh, you know, in that aspect, you know? But we don't require it when it's remodeled versus new construction.
Anybody else?
I guess I don't have a problem with the green space either, sometimes I think we get carried away too much on some of that anyway, so, but.
So, last question for Mr. Hipper, then that resolution would be all right? If we don't add the, uh, green space in, that's the one thing I see missing.
It's in, it's in the packet, I just-
Right, but not in the resolution.
Right, and it doesn't include any reference to green space, so.
Got it.
I would think that whoever would be moving forward with this, this would be the resolution that you'd be asking the council to adopt as written, and it's important that you're comfortable with the language it's going to be in this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any more concerns?
So, in one of the com- So staff was okay with there, you know, being some, not having any green space in that parking area? When you, I know you contacted them, talked about it, but.
Right, right, so the resolution was drafted based on what the planning commission approved, um, and recommended to the city council, which included those four conditions. Uh, the green space portion of the conversation was a suggestion, uh, to staff to talk with, uh, the property owner about it, um, and the property owner provided a response, but we didn't include it as a condition.
And conversation in the, in the planning and zoning meeting was, you know, Mr. Covington asked if possibly, you know, were that parking where Mr. Crawl would like- to designate that as, you know, landscape? And then if he could put the parking initially on the other property, which, you know, it's, it's not obtainable and, you know, he still meets the criteria on his property where he would like to put his parking in. And then it came down to like, I would kind of say the southeast corner or the utility pole closer to the accounting office, you know, whether, you know, there's a guy wire there if that, all right, you know, where you're going to dump snow, if it's concrete or rock, you know.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Well, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading approving with the four conditions, the application by Mike Crawl.
Second.
We have a motion, a second off, resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll go on to item 4.1, receive communication from Ted Marty on the Target Building property. Ted could be brought, there he is.
Hey, that's me. What do you need to know?
What do you got to tell us?
Huh? I'm out of room, so. And this is the best option I have, so. But it takes rezoning. Because number one, we're going to use it as a warehouse. Number two, ultimately, I'd like to move Star Keller there. And so that involves a taproom. Um, and some on-premise, or on-premise sales, yeah. And then ultimately, because at the brewery, I'm literally out of room. I can't dig into any more hillsides, kind of. It would be extremely difficult and if we had to, if we started growing, um, I've got nowhere to go, so. Other than build a new brewery somewhere else, so. But this would, uh, offer me an opportunity to put some fermenters over there. Generally, the fermentation and aging tanks are the, the limiting factor because we can bottle and can, you know, three shifts if we had to. So we can package way more than we can brew. Well, we can brew it way more than we can ferment and age. And so there may be a possibility that we'd want to put some fermentation tanks there, ferment, you know, truck it over, ferment, truck it back and package it, so. So I'd want to make sure that the zoning covered all of those if, if we're going to rezone it, so.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Ted, you're going to be coming before the planning and zoning commission?
Am I? Oh, I don't know.
I mean, after today, you'll have to go to the zoning.
Oh, okay.
If I'm hearing from staff.
Simple.
Simple.
Well, I like what you see, what I see in this, so I think it's a good use for the building and I guess I surely would support it.
Question for Mr. Marty, I assume that you've already met with the planning director, community development director?
Uh, Dave Shobor, yeah.
Okay, that's, then I won't ask my questions.
Well, I think we've had, you know, like three weeks of real dismal news and, and reading this would just brought a smile to my face and I think it has to our, our community as a whole. You know, you're a long-time business in our community and, and what a great opportunity for you, for the, our city to move forward and get this property, you know, up and running and active again. And I think it's a win-win for everybody and we'll certainly do our, what we can on our end to make sure this happens, uh, for you, so. Uh, I can only speak for myself, but I think this is something that we all see as a win-win for everybody and so thank you for thinking of Target and taking this on.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilor Schultz and I like the mixed use of the property also. I like that.
It's not too, will retail in that spot?
Probably not retail, maybe a, an event.
We like those.
Well, I like the thought of it and, uh, and I hope we can work with you and make it happen.
Thanks.
So how many hurdles are we jumping to make this happen? I know it's got to be rezoned and what else do we got to do? But, or can you give us kind of a brief, you or Dave or something, give us a brief update on what, what are all the steps that has to happen?
So, you know, I, I just want to come and just state a couple of things that, you know, again, I think this is very good use of that Target building, helping Schultz expand, you know, long-running business here. I think it really is something that we as a community can work with them, you know, as the city to get them where they need to go. Um, there will be some hurdles that we do need to jump, Dave will come up and explain kind of the thought process and some of the options that'll probably come before the zoning, um, uh, planning and zoning commission, but kind of just laying the foundation now, um, so you kind of understand where we're coming from, so, you know, you have that information prior and can mull it over between now and when it actually comes, uh, before council, uh, council again. So that's kind of what we're, we're doing at this point, so. Ted can move forward, you know, with his, with his project, you know, kind of having some, some backing of the council because it is a huge investment on Schultz to, to move forward with this.
And have Schultz on Broadway, it's just a huge thing for you folks, I'm sure.
Um, following up on Councilor Schultz's comment, I'm expecting a green belt sign similar to the one that Minneapolis has that you can pick up out on Highway 14.
There you go, there you go.
Anyway, um, regarding land use, one or more land use, um, recommendations and decisions are going to have to be made by the, um, city council. We actually have a variety of different approaches to this particular, um, area and so I think we need to have another con, further conversations, uh, with, uh, the Mardys and then, um, we will get them on their path to, um, getting that, um, taken care of.
One question I do want to know, Dave, okay, that's why I asked about the mixed use. Are we going to, I mean, we could rezone at B2, most of the use is permitted, but are we going to have to jump through some conditional use permits or whatnot?
Well, um, if you go B2, you'd have to do a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we could, um, write a provision into the B3 where we threw the conditional use permit to a lot of warehouses, I don't, wouldn't recommend that.
No.
In our new comp, or in our new zoning ordinance, we were going to establish a separate district for the Shell Brewing location. Well, we possibly could designate this property that way as well. We could maybe go an interim use permit for a while and then do something on, uh, you know, a little bit more longer term. We could do a new you, mixed use district. So we've got a lot of options.
Too many options.
Potentially approach, yeah, perhaps too many at this point, but we'll, we'll get there.
Dave, will you be bringing these options to the zoning commission?
Well.
Or staff will review what they feel is the best option.
What I would like to do is review it with, um, you know, Ted and Jody, uh, first and then, um, get the, uh, you know, identify an approach and then, um, have them start on that.
So do you think this is a two-month process, a six-month process?
Well, it depends what, um, approach we decide to take. Um, you know, we could do some stuff very quickly, um, other stuff will probably take a little bit longer.
Okay.
Kind of depends on what their schedule is, you know. It's good, we're looking forward to having that conversation with them.
That's going to be my question as well, is the timeline, it's not like you've answered that and I, I think, we hope that we're all going to roll up our sleeves and make this happen for the city and for the brewery, so.
Yeah, that's our intent.
Let's make it work, thank you.
Sounds good, thanks, Dave.
Exciting, congratulations. Any comments, Jody? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ted had some comments yet? Yeah, he had some comments yet.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's all I have.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, thanks.
I'll offer a motion then to receive and order file the communication from Ted Marty on behalf of August Schultz Brewing Company and potential development plans for the Target Building at 1914 South Broadway.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? See you none, on paper, say hi.
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 Both know, motion carries. Thank you, Jody and Ted. At this time, we'll go back to where we started.
3.1, right?
3.1, that's, yep. Make sure I know what I'm doing here, okay. 3.2, from the air.
No.
3.1. Amend section 9.14, general regulations of the city code. Dave?
Thank you. Um, the planning commission, um, conducted a public hearing at their March 26 meeting and at that time voted to forward, um, this, um, particular item to you for your consideration. Uh, the planning commission had also at their February meeting discussed this, um, subject, um, as well. Um, should note that, um, most communities our size do have solar ordinances. Um, the use of, uh, solar energy systems is something that we're seeing more of. And as a matter of fact, um, this particular, uh, topic was brought to city staff's attention by, um, staff from the Public Utilities Commission. And so we met with them, uh, both just to discuss the topic to begin with. And then we had a second meeting with them when we had an actual ordinance, uh, prepared and reviewed that with them, uh, as well. Um, as you, you know, probably know, we already have 13, uh, solar systems in the city that are interconnected with our electrical system. Uh, seven of them are commercial, six are residential. All of the residential are roof-mounted, uh, the commercial ones, um, tend to, um, to vary. Um, so the purpose of the ordinance is to provide appropriate places, locations, to facilitate the development of solar systems. Um, and also at the same time, establish some standards, uh, in order to protect the public and surrounding properties. And so it's kind of, uh, we're trying to balance both of those. Uh, the ordinance, uh, that you have, um, in your, under consideration at, um, tonight's meeting, um, I'll go through it real quickly, if that's, um.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, we have eight definitions. Then we have, um, sections on residential districts and a separate section on business, industrial and agricultural residence districts. And within each of those sections, we break our regulations down into ground-mounted, um, systems and roof-mounted systems. And I, I, you know, ground-mounted are ones that basically are on poles, some type of pole and the panels are attached to it. Roof are obviously attached to a, um, to roof. And so within those sections, we provide, um, information on location, setbacks, height and coverage and that's something that's fairly standard to most ordinances, they cover those, um, topics. Um, our fourth major, um, part then goes on to applicable standards in all zoning districts. Fifth part is the approval process. Sixth is aesthetics. Seventh is easements. Eight is what happens when systems are abandoned. And then the ninth is how do we treat, um, solar energy systems in historical, um, districts or landmark areas? So that's kind of a real, you know, a breakdown of, um, what is, what is in the ordinance. Again, this is, um, solar energy systems, they're something that we're seeing a lot of and we anticipate seeing more of them, you know, in the future. That takes care.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I'm going to just state that the planning commission, you know, we had this before us two times. We, we brought up some questions and staff answered those questions, you know, one of them was glare and how do they handle that, uh, you know, or if a ground system is going to exceed 120 square feet that come for conditional use permit and, you know, things of that nature. You know, we were in favor of, uh, getting it established.
And the last page of this document's got some good question and answer stuff for the public as well if they have, uh, some basic questions on this, but this is going to come back to us for a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the recommendations of the planning commission to establish solar, uh, solar energy system standards and proceed with the first consideration of the ordinance 2020-038.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? See you none, on paper, say hi.
Hi.
Both know, motion carries. We'll go on to item 3.2, from the airport consulting committee recommending the selection of an airport consultant.
Good evening, Steve Kaler, city engineer. Uh, in order for the city to utilize federal and state grant monies for airport improvements, we must be engaged with a contract with a, uh, qualified consulting engineer. Uh, we do this on a five-year basis. The current contract with Mead and Hunt will expire in June, so we needed to go through the process again. Uh, we, the, uh, staff solicited and received two statements of qualifications from consulting firms interested in providing these services. The, uh, consultant selection committee made up of the four member, four members of the, uh, Airport Commission, myself and, uh, the assistant city engineer raided each of them and, uh, we unanimously selected Mead and Hunt as the first, first, uh, selection and, uh, Bolton Mink as the second. So we're asking for authorization to move ahead with, uh, to initiate discussion with Mead and Hunt to define the scope of work and, uh, fee schedule for these services. After we do that, we'll bring it back to the council for your final approval.
Thank you, Steve.
With that, I'll authorize city staff to initiate discussion with Mead and Hunt to fully define the scope of work and airport services to be provided.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? See you none, on paper, say hi.
Hi.
Both know, motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We'll go to item 5.1, performance evaluation of the city manager. I ask that this be put on the agenda just because with the virus and everything going around, I don't think we want to sit around and close proximity and discuss it, so we'll, no major rush, put it off to a later date.
Mr. President, I'm going to maybe challenge you a little bit on that and I, I think on behalf of our city manager, he probably would like to get this done and move forward. And I think, would it be a closed meeting, right, Roger?
Yes.
So basically it would be at this group right here, which we're all within six feet of each other anyway. I know that Chris has already worked on some goals. I think, I don't know, I, I, it's easy to say just put it off, but, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on and, and I think if there, Chris would probably want to know if there are some concerns or issues that we bring to his attention so he can address them instead of waiting three months later, six months later. I don't have major issues or concerns, but I, I think there's some things that we all would like to talk about a little bit and, and move forward so that Chris knows and everybody knows. So I, I'm going to ask that we not table it or not put it off, so that's my thought. If you all vote me, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I think, um, it'd be nice for Chris to move forward too and not have that just hanging over his head.
So you're saying you want to stay tonight and have closed session?
We can't, we, I don't think, we didn't give a notice.
Can't tonight, so. So are you saying less and you want to have a meeting in May or?
I think when, first let's see if you guys agree or not, but if you do, then I think we should schedule it.
I guess I, I, I don't have any problem waiting till our first week in May, um, just kind of get through this whole COVID thing and hopefully we'll be up and, and probably out and about more than we are these next couple of weeks.
I would agree.
I'm okay either way.
I mean, I think Chris was fine, fine with that, I mean.
That's a month.
It's a month.
Yeah.
We're talking.
Was it the first meeting or the second?
I would just.
I would do the first.
I guess where I would go, huh?
I would do the first meeting in May and.
Go to first.
That would be my thought because the second meeting, we usually do a work session.
Right.
Well, let's tentatively set it up for that and see what happens, we can always change it.
Yeah, tentatively.
So it would just be the next meeting.
Right.
Right?
No.
Well, this is. This is the first, April, so.
Then I think Chris can move on and he knows what this valuation is, is and I, I just.
First meeting in May.
A little peace of mind is my, my thought.
We can tentatively set it for the first meeting, we can always change again next meeting, something comes up.
Yeah, and then we'll know where.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Question for the city, we can put that in here tonight, first meeting in May?
You can schedule however you want to, um, and, uh, I don't know if, you know, Chief Borkert is going to have any comments about the wisdom of having. And I don't know if, you know, Chief Borkert is gonna have any comments about the wisdom of having that meeting. When we listen to the medical experts, they're not real optimistic that things are going to be normal by the first week in May. There may be people here tonight who are in the hospital. They may be in the hospital because they're here tonight. So it's up to you guys, you can schedule it for the second meeting in April. But I would just urge you to have some caution doing this, the understanding that you might have to change it if you do set it that soon. I think, again, listening to the experts, a meeting of this type, we can, it's much easier to do business, but I think we really have to listen to what they're telling us.
But how would it be any different than what we're doing right now tonight?
You got it.
Right.
And how wise is this?
Yeah, and should we be doing this tonight? Should we have done a call-in type meeting?
Some calling in.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think Chris is concerned about whether we speed it up or slow it up or, let's hear your comment.
You know, I will echo kinda what Les said, you know, it would be nice to know if there, there are things for improvement. I, I know there is room for improvement, I think I've worked on some of the, some of the things that have been brought to my attention, so, you know, again, whether we do it in, in a month or two months from now, I mean, it's kinda, it would be nice to know, but I get we need to be cautious of, of what we're doing at the same time. You know, and again, it, to me, if there's anything that you feel I need to address, you, you have my email address, you have my phone number, we can, you know, work on those things sooner rather than later, but, you know, I get where, where Les is coming from, you know. And so really up to the council on, if you wanna move forward with that, but, you know, if you wanna set it for that first meeting in May, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. You know, and we'll play it by ear and see how things pan out at that point.
I don't, I'm gonna go back to where, like I brought it up, I, I don't think it's essential, I don't think we need to push it, you know? If we had any major problems or we could discuss about it right now, let's just put off meetings.
You know, the other, the other option probably could be is all of us, the city councils have set up some time with our city manager over the phone and, and talk about good and bad and goals and, you know, because he has, I mean, he's given us our goals, I know, I think we've all seen those where that, you know, I don't know if there's any, you know, comments of changing some goals or are there other goals we're looking at? I mean, that's what'd be nice to have that group discussion that we're gonna miss, but.
Yeah, I think we need to have that group discussion, I don't think we can just do it individually and give them four, five different opinions. That would be kinda tough.
Sitting here. Question for the city attorney on this new, what we should've done tonight, you can't really do a performance eval that way, can you?
I think it would be very difficult.
Yes.
It's a practical matter, I, I don't really know how you would do it. People calling in, I think it's best handled in person.
Right.
When you decide the time is right to do that.
I understand our city manager's concern with it, let's get it done, but I also understand what the medical field is telling us. I'll just receive a note, performance eval, our city manager, Chris Dalton, is delayed until a later date, because we, we don't know a date.
Second.
You have a second? Any more discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll go on to item, do we wanna do that one or are we gonna push that to the end?
We push it to the end and just get through the other items.
We talked about it. Okay, we'll go on to item five point three, amendment of the architects and construction manager contract, Chris?
So with the increase, potential increased cost of construction, both RJM and JLG do have in their contract that it's, their contract amount is a portion of the total construction cost. So JLG is looking at, at increasing their contract by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars, which is their rate of six point nine percent, and RJM is looking, is, would look at increasing their contract by thirty thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents, which is one point six five percent, that's stated in their, stated in their contract. So with that, we would be looking at essentially just reducing our furnitures, fixtures, and equipment budget for the project and not tapping into other sources at that point.
Now, Chris, what if this whole project, when we get the bids and we get a surprise and it's, it's up even more?
It caps out at eleven point five because that is the cap that they're setting. They can't control what the bids come in at, but they can say, we designed an eleven point five million dollar building and that's, that's it.
Correct, I believe that was in the original contracts a while back, right?
Yep.
So at eleven and a half.
Yeah, or we're doing it at the eleven, three, four, five, which was the, the estimate that came in and that you had approved to move forward with.
But right now, we're just getting numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't know what that number is and, and we still have a lot to discuss with the other finances and.
Yeah, and so for them, it's just increasing it because they are currently designing, getting the bids, and we still wanna be on track with when we get the bids out because as of right now, it's looking like a lot of other projects that are out there are being halted and potentially won't come back online because of what's going on, so there may be, it may be a little advantageous for, for us to get the bids out because there might be more bids coming in and we might actually get, potentially get a good price, so we wanna stay on the schedule that we're currently on and move forward.
So are we paying them quarterly or just, we're just gonna give them a lump sum again?
No, so we, there's milestones they have to hit, so when they finish the construction drawings, there'll be a payment and a draw for that. And so that's how, and then the construction manager really hasn't been paid at all at this point because they haven't actually started the construction yet, and that's when a lot of their fees will be coming into place.
Yeah.
Thank you, any more questions for Chris?
So this here comes to us, and we really can't say no because we actually got a contract with them, and we've already approved that.
Correct.
Right.
You've, yeah, you've approved the initial amount, but because that, we have to amend that contract to have that in there, so that's what, really what this is for, is approval for the amendment.
The good news on it, Counselor Fisher, if we'd, wouldn't have had to do all that scaling back, these numbers would be a heck of a lot bigger. That's the good news.
Yeah.
True.
Well, I'm gonna authorize the city manager to sign amendment to JLG's contract in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars, and RJM's contract in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Item six point one, first consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty. Oh, did I?
No.
No.
Solar systems?
This is the first.
This is the first reading.
First reading.
Yeah, where this is.
First, first consideration.
First consideration, oh, you don't wanna read it.
Said that on the last one.
All right. So you don't have to do nothing with it, we just considered it, all right.
Yeah.
We'll go on to six point two, task order number twenty fifteen dash zero five for airport engineering services, Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is a contract to provide construction inspection for the next item on the agenda, got a little bit out of order, I guess. We're gonna have a pavement reconstruction project that was on the capital improvement plan and is included in this year's airport capital improvement plan as well. So this would be for the construction observation and administration and closeout of that contract, it's for eighty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for Mead and Hunt, and there is federal and state participation involved with it as well, so we're asking you to authorize that contract.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Or do you have a motion?
I'll entertain, or I'll entertain, I'll move the motion to consider approval of task order twenty fifteen oh five for airport engineering services to the Mead and Hunt professional service contract in the amount of eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars contingent on the availability of federal and state funds and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Item six point three, set bid opening date for twenty twenty airport hangar area pavement rehabilitation project, Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the airport hangar area pavement rehabilitation project, the plans have been completed, we wanna have the city council authorize the opening of bids at the end of April and we will bring the numbers back to you.
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading approving the plans and specifications.
Second. We have a motion and a second, off resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point four, set bid opening date for the two thousand twenty utility street and alley improvement group one project, Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President, again, this was in, in the capital improvement memorandum that the city council adopted in December of two thousand nineteen. We've got the plans and specs ready to go on the two thousand twenty utility street and alley improvement project and would like a resolution to authorize opening of bids at the end of April.
Thank you.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the plans and specification.
Second. We have a motion and a second, off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point five, approved MINDOT agreement number one zero three six, one five seven. Mr. Kaler.
Mr. President, council members, this is a cooperative construction agreement with the state of Minnesota to basically clean up some issues from their two thousand seventeen millon overlay on Broadway. On that particular project, they changed some grades along the centerline and intersections and did not include casting and gate valve adjustments. The city is responsible for the cost and would have been if it was initially in their construction documents. Our cost will be, I'm losing the number here.
Fifty-nine.
Uh, fif, just under sixty thousand dollars and we can use our NSA state aid monies, so there's no general tax levy with this, and this was also included in the capital improvement plan, and they hope to do it this summer.
No tax levies also, always good, so I'm gonna offer the resolution, waive the reading to approve the cooperative construction agreement number one oh three, six, one, five, seven with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation for project zero eight, zero five, dash, one, one, eight, Trunkiway fifteen utility pair project, and authorize city manager and finance director to sign the agreements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, off resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point six, establish a no parking area on Minnesota Street south of Seventeenth North Street. Mr. Kaler.
Mr. President and council members, this is a request that came from the administration of three M through the city manager and the safety commission was not able to get it on their agenda due to the COVID situation, plus when we initially got it, it was January and we can't put posts in the ground when the boulevard is frozen. So you've got some information in your packet, basically eastbound Seventeenth North toward the three M plant cannot see to the south or the right hand when there's some pickups parking in that area. There's, I've been out there several times and when those pickets are, pickups are there, it, it is tough to see, it gets congested, I would imagine, when three M has their shift break, so we're recommending that we establish no parking on the west side of Minnesota Street for eighty feet so, from Seventeenth North to the south, I went out and measured it and that should work fine.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I'll with the resolution, waive the reading, establish a no parking area on the west side of Minnesota Street from Seventeenth North Street to eighty feet south.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point seven, consider a professional service contract with new zoning regulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Schnobrak.
Thank you. The city council in your twenty twenty budget set aside twenty thousand dollars to retain a planning consultant to assist with the completion of this project. We prepared an RFP, we sent it out to approximately ten firms, we got five proposals back. We had a three-person review committee. We evaluated the proposals based on criteria that was in the RFP. And you have before you a listing of the firms and the, the ranking, and so we would recommend retaining the firm of SRF Consulting Group to assist us with this project.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Question for staff, we've used these before, this consultant group?
SRF has done work for the city of New Ulm previously, none of it zoning related. They did the Herman Height study that was done back in two thousand and eight. So they, they're kind of one of those firms that does engineering, you know, some architecture, planning. It's a pretty comprehensive variety of services that they provide.
So what are you asking them specifically to accomplish?
To help us finish the new zoning ordinance.
The timeline for that is what?
We told them in the proposal that we wanted to have a doc, a draft document ready August first.
This is going back to, again, our city manager, one of his goals was to get this project complete. Is that realistic, is that gonna happen?
We told them August first and they said they could do it by that date. It's gonna involve a significant amount of staff work on our part as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. Any more discussion?
I think we've been working on these zoning for thirteen years, something like that. So yes, we need to get it done. I'm gonna go ahead and award the contract to SRF Consulting Group to provide professional services in the preparation of the new city zoning regulations and the cost not to exceed twenty thousand.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Next item, six point eight, city revolving loan adjustment due to COVID nineteen.
So this is an item that was, we'd like to bring before you because we need council authorization to potentially defer payments. We did have one business that does have a revolving loan at this time, say they needed to have a reprieve. They do need to have, wanna have a reprieve or requesting a reprieve or a deferral of payments at this time because supply chains are getting a little tight. So what we plan on doing is deferring the payments, essentially just sliding their payment schedule out a couple of months. So they would resume payments starting August first, twenty twenty. We would have to ask all those businesses again to sign an agreement saying that that is okay. We're gonna ask each individual business if they wanna do that, if they are able to just maintain payments, that option is available for them, but there is one that is asking for a deferral at this point in time.
Is that revenue intended to be, is that part of our budget overall, I would assume, that revenue coming in?
No, because it just goes back into the revolving loan fund.
Okay. And how much are we talking, do we know?
Not off the top of my, not off the, my, top of my head, but it is only four businesses that do have current revolving loans with the city. And so, and only one of them is asking for that deferral for a couple of months during this time.
So would we reach out to those other three to ask them?
Yes.
If they would, okay.
Yeah, so everyone will have the option for this deferral. And then we would have to draft some agreement saying, we're just shifting your payment schedule out an additional three months, so we're not losing any revenue. We're just shifting that payment schedule, so they have some reprieve or some. So we're not losing any revenue. We're just shifting that payment schedule, um, so they have some reprieve or some, uh, during this time.
I think we have to do what we can to, to help our folks during this critical time period. So I'm going to authorize a deferral of payments, um, to current city revolving loan for three months with payments restart on August twentieth. And I would assume with new, with new contracts, amended contracts.
Mister President, Counselor Schultz, I guess one thing I think, and I'm not sure how difficult this might be for the calls office. But generally, I think you can certainly amend these contracts, excuse me, these notes to extend them out. I think, I don't know that you can waive interest. And I think what it would mean is that there's going to be interest accruing for three months and that's going to change whatsoever. And so you'd almost, you would then have to do a new amortization schedule with the extra three months added on.
With the guidance I got from the league, I think we're okay deferring the interest. I don't think we have to continue to accrue interest. And it's, I mean, it's just a matter of changing the formula in the spreadsheet on our part, but.
I'm not sure what they mean by, you know, they deferring the interest. I mean, it's still accruing interest.
No, not accrue, I'm sorry, not accruing interest. I mean, I, I spoke with the league and I got some guidance from them regarding that, both here and with the EDA loans that we've also opted to do that with.
I think the EDA, you know, with the nature of the loan.
Right.
Of course, that's different. Um, city revolving loan fund, uh, I haven't seen that authority and I think ultimately it is up to the council. If you're going to give them an interest-free, you know, grace period like that, uh, I don't know that it's going to amount to a whole lot anyway with the amount of the payments for three months of interest, uh, one way or another.
So I could alter the motion, but you've already got some.
Guidance from.
Guidance that we're okay, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to let my motion stand then and see if there's a second to that.
I'll second that. I guess I don't have a problem with deferring the whole, so the interest will be stopping those three months and then he'll just pick up. Yeah, I don't really have a, a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure we were covered with that.
I'm okay with it also.
You know, we're doing it at the EDA with some stuff too, so.
Yeah, that's just, we're working with businesses.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Good idea. We do have a motion to second. Any more discussion? See enough? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item six point nine, order Van Tile Properties LLC to correct or and remove the hazardous conditional, condition of the building. Sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. President, I guess, um, I've been asked to present this. Uh, Mr. Zabel isn't here this evening.
Okay.
Um, and I can advise you and the council that this has been, of course, primarily his, uh, project, you know, as their investig-, as our investigator. Uh, in addition, he's been working with assistant city attorney, Thomas Borgan, uh, for the legal part of it. Uh, I have been monitoring that. I've had conversations with Elwood about it. Uh, basically what's in front of you tonight is this. As you may know, uh, the property has been roped off for a while as a matter of just a public safety hazard. Mr. Zabel feels quite strongly that action needs to be taken. This has been going on actually for probably several years. And he's provided the owner with notice indicating what needs to be done. Uh, that has not happened. So what the law provides for is that this council can basically ask and act in what's called a quasi judicial manner, and you can issue an order. And that's what's in front of you tonight. The order would direct the property owner to get the problems corrected and have it pass safety inspection within thirty days. If he does not do that, our next step is then to ask the court to issue an order. At that point, if the property owner or the banks that have mortgages, we're going to contest it. They've got twenty days to serve an answer. If they don't do anything, the court will issue the order. And once that's issued, the next step is the city can undertake the remedial measures necessary to get the property back into a safe condition. And all of the costs of doing that can then be assessed back against the property owner through a special assessment. We can get a judgment if we want to collect on that, but ultimately the responsibility falls back on the property owner to reimburse the city for what we've had to do to make this building safe. As far as what those costs might be, we'd have to ask Mr. Zabel. I don't have that information.
I know I drove by and looked at it and something needs to be done, so I think we need to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
I think the initial estimate, um, and I could be off base, um, with my conversations with Elwood, was about a hundred and fifty thousand to repair the wall. About three hundred thousand if we decided to tear the building down. Uh, but then you also have the issue, if you tear the building down, the building next to it, that becomes an exterior wall and you have to fix that wall as well. Um, so the initial would be, you know, the initial recommendation would probably be to repair the wall, uh, at that point.
So what do we know about the owners? Is he a local? Do they just not responding? What, what do we know?
Not sure, um, where the owner is at these days, but generally at this point, there have been conversations that he has had with Elwood. But, um, he is not taking any action to get this corrected.
We've been, Elwood has been working with him, you know, trying to get, trying to get it fixed. Uh, but every time, you know, when that, that date rolls, the expiration day rolls around, it's, you know, I don't have the money at this time to, to fix the issue. So again, that's why we're moving forward with this process.
And I, and again, I've not been in direct contact with the property owner. Uh, he may disagree with the engineer that we've got as far as what might be necessary or required, uh, which he's entitled to do. But we've had this inspected a number of times by a professional engineer, and he's got real concerns about the safety of the building. The walls could come down. So, and you can't just do, in the engineer, our engineer's opinion, you can't just do a cosmetic fix and put something over the surface. You've got to get inside, which is expensive.
Uh, in my comment, I'm all for moving ahead. This problem goes back a few years on this building. It's been dealt with, blocked and tackled up and whatnot. It's time to just move forward with it because it's unsafe. I'll offer the resolution waive the reading approving the issuance of an order to Van's Isle Properties LLC, the owners of three oh seven North Minnesota Street, to correct or remove the hazardous conditions of the building.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second off the resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
I'm going to, my question is, if he doesn't respond to this, and will this come back to council again for further action or after we have an engineer?
Well, we could, yeah, we could report back to the council at any time. Um, but because it's a safety matter, normally, uh, absent some other instructions from the council, our intention would be to get him served, get the thirty days running. If he has not undertaken any measures to get it straightened out, then the next step would be to go to court, get the court order. And what that court order would do would be to allow the city to move forward legally, if you wanted to, to get it repaired and then assess that back on the property owner. Now, if he were to contest that, if he files an answer, and we've had this happen in other cases where we've had to go this route, it could be tied up in court for a while. And we just don't know that. But we can certainly report back to you.
Yeah, I would like to hear back and, you know, what kind of resolution we get from, you know, from the property owner and, you know, if he's receptive to it or, or if he's, you know, if he owns it outright or if he's going to give it back to his bank or, you know, if we could find some sort of resolution, you know, to.
Will do.
And it's completely vacant right now. There's nothing in there?
No.
The last tenants have left.
Yeah, last tenant moved out, um, I think mid-February.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? See enough? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point ten, police department donations.
I'll offer the resolution waive the reading, accepting the donation from Herbert Knutson in the amount of one thousand doll, one thousand dollars to support the New Ulm fire, or police department K nine program.
Second. We have a motion to second off the resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
Counselor Fisher, didn't you jump in that? I can't remember.
What's that?
Didn't you jump in that plunge?
No.
Oh, I thought maybe you were going to.
Sorry.
Next year.
Next year.
Yep.
Okay.
But thank you to Mr. Knutson. That's a great, great, uh, thing that happens with our community.
Yeah, yes.
Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item seven, uh, report of claims, accept a list of claims paid in amount of five million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents and approve a list of two claims to be paid in amount of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-two cents. So move.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? See enough? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Now we'll go back to item five point two, extend the declaration of the peacetime state of emergency involving the coronavirus pandemic.
So, um, I would like to request that we extend the proclamation to the second meeting in May, uh, just because it's an ever-changing situation. Um, and we need to be, need to be flexible, um, to make changes on the fly. You know, I'll give you an update, uh, on kind of what we've done so far. Um, again, parks, parks or playgrounds have been closed, roped off at this point in time, have been signed. Um, all park, park and rec facilities essentially have been closed to the public, same with city hall. We are currently working, um, any, anyone that can work from home has been working from home. Uh, and then as far as our crews go, they've been alternating weeks at this point in time, but they have had the stipulation that they are on call, uh, during this time as well. That way, if one crew gets sick, we still have one crew available to do street work, line work, um, you know, work on the park and rec facility. There is talk, um, you know, pretty good chance that the stay at home is going to be extended again, probably till May first. Um, so we are looking at continuing this, um, what we're doing right now as far as staffing levels go. Um, but then also looking, working with the utilities and the street department to see if work needs to be done or start, you know, because weather is actually really good right now. We need to start doing streets, street repairs, things like that, um, how that's going to look, um, because they do have to be, you know, within the social distancing area. Um, so again, whether it's putting, making, hey, you have to wear long sleeve shirts, you know, even though it's eighty degrees outside, you know, have, you know, face shield or at least a bandana to help with, um, spread of germs, we'll be looking at things like that, um, to make sure we're still operating, um, as safely as possible. Uh, and then maybe it's, you know, crews are stuck working with each other the entire, you know, that entire, um, construction season. So if one crew gets sick, again, you still have the other crew able to work. Um, but we will be discussing that tomorrow and on Thursday. And I'll get you a report on Friday with kind of what that consensus is, so you know what's, uh, going to happen, uh, moving forward for the neck, the following two weeks. Uh, as of right now, Parks and Rec has canceled, um, or put on hold their, their summer programming. They haven't, um, published their brochure and they haven't opened up, um, they're not going to open up their registration, which was supposed to start on April sixth. Um, they're, they are preparing though for potentially a normal summer programming. Um, they're getting that prepared just in case. But they're also waiting to see what state and federal guidance is on summer programming. And as you may or may not know, Minneapolis has literally closed all their parks and their summer programming, uh, and their beaches for the summer. Um, and, uh, as it gets farther, if they're not able to, um, put out for summer work until July, it might already be too late. As some of those workers may already have taken jobs other places. Um, so they may be canceling all their summer programming. But again, we'll keep you informed what that is going to look like as we get more guidance, um, from what the, the Parks and Rec, um, the state Parks and Rec department is putting out. But that includes playgrounds, the skate park, BMX, dog park, trap and skeet range, wading pools, splash pad, tennis courts, pickleball, basketball, sand and volleyball, baseball, softball, German park, Monday night concerts. Rec on the go, puppet wagon, the restrooms, the shelters and the drinking fountains. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll keep you, keep you posted. The one thing is, as this progresses down the road, the rec center just maybe goes kind of permanently as we start going into renewed construction. That's supposed to start in July, so that's kind of where we're at right now. And then at this point, I would also like to ask if we can keep city hall closed until that May first deadline, uh, or May first, um, to the public at this point. You know, county's closed till the twenty-seventh. Stay at home is supposed to be till May first, so just be in line with the stay at home at this point.
A couple of questions. I know, sounds like the complaint you hear on Facebook the most is still kids, adolescents playing basketball. And cities I hear are taking the hoops down to prevent that groupings. Um, is that something that's been talked about at all?
No, I mean, because the green.
It'd be mean, but it, but it does sound like that's an area of concern in our city and, um.
There hasn't been any, but if that's the direction you want to go, we can see if that's feasible. I don't know how they're mounted on there at that point.
I don't know either, but if, but that's even, and it's kind of like some, like you're kind of being mean, but apparently there was a dozen kids down at one of the parks the other night.
Riverside. Yeah.
What's that?
Riverside. You know, I mean, it is getting warmer, so, you know, fortunately at this point, we haven't, the plague people are abiding by the caution tape on the playgrounds. They're, they haven't been ripped down at this point, uh, in time. Um, I think residents. Uh, I mean, I think residents at this point are really adhering to, you know, as best as possible to the, the shelter in place. Um, you know, I will say, you know, commend a lot of the citizens at this point for really taking it seriously, but you have kids. You know, what are you going to, what are you going to do? They're going to want to go outside. They're going to want to play, play with their friends and, you know, we don't want to limit that option, but we should at some point.
Or signs, if nothing else, or?
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, at least sign it.
What about thought of, uh, you know, the CDC's moving to masks and they're telling people you should have masks out in public and, and so you know the next step is going to be employees should have masks while they're at work with each other. Is that being discussed yet?
At this point in time, I currently have distributed, uh, masks to everyone that has been in city hall, um, over the, at least today. And well, there'll be another different set in tomorrow and I'll, I'll give them masks at that point. Um, I really tell them it's up to you at this point, but when it becomes mandated that you have to wear them at all times, they'll have them. They're supposed to leave them at work, so it's not, you know, they bring them home, they're like, oh, I need another mask because they are in short supply at this point. Um, so we, we have taken steps to move forward with that as, at this point.
I think we're there. I, I just, um, the only thing is you don't want to short our medical facilities and, and our nursing homes. But, um, if we're not shorting them, I think that there should be a policy in place, um, until this is over and, um, or until we can lessen it up a little bit or more. I don't know what other people think, but you probably need direction from us to make that happen or?
I mean, yeah, I mean.
You have the authority to make it happen on your own, but.
Yes. Uh, you know, and like I said, I have distributed them, you know, where, as you feel necessary. But, um, if that's the direction that the council would like to go, where everyone needs to wear them at all times, I mean, we can, we can make that happen because we do have those, those masks, um, available. And I have started distributing them here and down at the, at the PUC.
I mean, if you're working by yourself at PUC, that's a whole different story than if you're working in an office setting and, and you've got people around you like this, I mean.
Chris, I've got a question in regards to our projects. So we're starting German Park. We've got the Johnson Park and we've got some potential start up at Herman. And now are we going to keep those projects going ahead? And then how is staff going to be interacting with contractors or, you know, for inspections or follow-up? You know, we're taking precautions. Yeah, so all those projects are moving full steam ahead at this point. You know, uh, at this point, when, if Elwood needs to go up and inspect, he has, they have a couple of options, you know, out being outside. If they need to do foundation inspection, inspections, they go out, they wear their, you know, PPE that they need to be wearing out. Um, if it's an interior inspection, we have been working with contractors and things like that for, so they can take pictures of those items, send them to us, and we can inspect it that way. Um, if they don't want to go into someone's house, um, so we are taking all necessary precautions for staff to be safe when they're doing inspections and things like that.
So do we want to do anything with the masks or?
I think we just let it up to Chris. I think he's got it under his control already, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I think it should be discussed.
I mean, because at this point too, we, in city hall, you know, really upstairs, um, at this point, it's myself and Otter literally sitting in our offices. And we either have one of the leases there. Uh, Shawna is working from home, so it's really three, three people and then downstairs in finance. Um, they have alternating schedules where the opposite cubicles are kind of, kind of working and only one front desk person. And same thing with engineering. We've kind of staggered a lot of things to limit the number of people and still have that social distancing available. But, you know, like I said, I distributed the masks and it's like, if you feel comfortable wearing this and you want to wear it, you're more than welcome to, but, you know, keep it here in the office, so.
Because I, you know, who knows when we have another council meeting, if we have a, what if we have an issue that's a lot of people want to come and talk about? Because I, you know, who knows when we have another council meeting, if we have a, what if we have an issue that's a lot of people want to come and talk about?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have a policy about that either. Oh, sorry, you can't come in. We can, you know, I know you're spacing them in the hallway, but what if it's a larger issue and?
You know, and I.
The garland again or something, you know, it's where people are going to come in.
Yeah, and I think at that point, if there is a hot button issue that we feel we will probably have this setting and then allow people to call in at that point to hear the conversation and have that, so they can do it from the comfort of their home. But we also have been reaching out to individuals who, for the public hearings, like Mr. Covington and Mr. Crawl. We emailed, talked to them and said, you can email in your response and we'll read it into the record, so you don't need to show up to the meetings as well. So we are trying to, trying our best to figure out what's going to work. Again, it's not ideal, but we are trying to limit contact and make, do the best we can.
So if we're calling into future meetings, I know you're talking about just a phone call-in system, but we have other programs other people are using. Are, are any of them approved or appropriate for, like Skype, like Zoom, any of those? Are we able to vote with those and still be part of the meeting versus a telephone?
Counselor Schultz, yes. The answer to that is yes. Other cities are doing that right now. They've been doing it for several weeks.
What platform are they using? Do you know?
Some of them are using Zoom. There's another one.
Yeah, WebEx.
WebEx, that's very popular.
Both of them have been recently hacked and they're recommending that they're not HIPAA approved. But I don't know if we talk HIPAA stuff anyway, really, so.
And part of it too, I'm having our IT director look into it because the other issue is having UCAT tap into that as well. I don't think at this current point in time, we have the capability to do that. But we are going to look into it because we do stream it. It is live. But I'll be able to get you a response from our director, probably send it out tomorrow morning. So you're kind of aware where we're at at this point in time.
I know, because I've been using Zoom a lot. I really like it. It's very simple, it's very easy. But a law enforcement officer out of St. Peter, he was in a meeting yesterday with his other law enforcement detectives and he got hacked. I mean, people hacked into the Zoom account.
There was a full-page story in the business section of the Tribune today on the steps you need to take to get security.
Yeah, you need to have the business account or whatever, right?
There's a lot of stuff you could do, I think, to make it much more secure.
I think we need to be looking for, looking at that very quickly because if things do get ugly, we need to, we need to keep moving.
Well, and do we have the equipment at home to do that? I mean.
You basically just need internet.
Or the know-how, Lisa.
There is that one. There always is that one.
Two cups, one on each end.
I was looking that way, though. Do we have everything?
Some of us have the equipment, don't know know-how.
You know, and, and I think that the call-in right now is the easiest method because you can access your agenda, you know, from your laptop or your computer at home. While we look at other, other solutions moving forward, you know, I know Nate is, is looking at that, those other options to get us a system that will work with our current setup and those things. So, you know, I, at this time, you know, I asked that you be patient and we'll probably try it on a, you know, a smaller commission meeting to see what, how that works before trying it with the council as whole and like, oh, we have to do it a different way. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep you posted and I'll, I'll get you some, some answers soon.
So I would assume some of the cities, Roger, are doing that just to make sure if, you know, two are sick, three can still keep going. So they're not, everybody's in the room and we all get sick at one time?
Yeah.
I think the, the state law says as long as you have one counselor or the city manager or the city attorney present physically in this room, everybody else can participate electronically by phone through one of these programs. So that's all you need to do.
The difference being that every vote has to be a roll call vote.
Correct. Every vote has to be a roll call.
You'll love that, right?
We did it with EDA and it worked.
Yeah, it worked well.
And I guess myself, I prefer to be here, so I mean, I just like, I want the people to be here, so I have no problem with it.
Unless you get sick.
Right.
Have a cold or.
Well, I think for the time being, like even next meeting, that if you have two people here, that the rest of us just call in. We should really work towards that, just that call in.
The other question is, is during this, could we go to one meeting a month temporary? I know what our charter says, but.
Well, you could have a meeting and you could adjourn it, assuming you had a quorum participating and doing it, if you think that would work.
Which as a heads up is what we're doing with the Board of Equalization. We'll have to have the meeting that day and we'll have to adjourn to a later date.
Isn't there some talk of moving that back?
There, I can't remember where. I'll have to talk to Kim and see where she ended that discussions with Ann, but.
Thought I heard that from Ann, that that might not happen on me. But I did talk about how we separated as much as we could here and how they potentially could do it here, but again, if a lot of people appeal.
Counselor, I just have to say, I think, I mean, the point of the social distancing and the stay-at-home is to avoid what we're doing tonight. And we all feel a duty to do our jobs and you've been elected and you want to be here, but that's not the plan. The plan is to stay home because we don't know. All of us might be carriers right now. And we've been in this room for over an hour and a half. So, you know, it's just not really the way it should be done.
I think we should kind of plan for our next meeting to.
Phone in.
To, to phone in, but.
You know, and this.
If the, if the stay-at-home is still in place, we can still conduct our, conduct our business. I mean, we all have a computer or most of us have a computer to look at our agendas and.
Call in.
And then I am looking at, you know, trying to, any items that aren't essential or don't need immediate action, holding those off to a later date. You know, but stuff that really needs something, you know, we'll bring it forward. So that way the, it's a smaller, potentially a smaller meeting, you know, limiting that, but we'll see.
And I'm sure you're wiping down our stations very good.
Oh, yeah.
Making sure they're.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, you just want to extend the declaration, correct?
Potentially, yeah, and then.
Be a pro that, yeah.
No.
I offer a motion to extend.
That, and then also keeping City Hall closed.
Second. Any more discussion?
A resolution.
I'll offer the resolution to extend.
Motion in a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? Did you have anything, Dave, you wanted to say? Okay.
Very good.
No more discussion. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.
Everybody get out.